Oh, sorry. Yeah, you can put your stuff there.
I'd like to call to order this Concord Township Zoning Commission meeting Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. To order. We have a rather long agenda, so let's get started. Heather, roll call members.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Eifelies?
Here.
Mr. Schindler?
Here.
Mr. Rappert?
Here.
Mr. Wirtow?
Here.
Okay. First thing on the agenda, electing a chairperson. I will entertain any nominations.
Mr. Chair or standing chair, as it might be.
Acting Chair.
Acting Chair. I would like to nominate Hiram Rappert as chairman for the remainder of the calendar year, if that's appropriate.
I'll second that nomination.
Any other nominations?
No, sir.
Okay, nominations are closed. Roll call.
Uh, I'm sorry. Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Eifelies?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Rappert?
Abstain.
And Mr. Wirtow?
Yes.
Okay, electing vice chairman, chairperson.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Rich Eifelies as vice chairman.
I second. I second, Mr. Chairman.
Any other nominations? Okay, nominations are closed. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rappert?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Wirtow?
Yes.
Mr. Eifelies?
I will abstain.
Congratulations, Mr. Chairperson.
To you as well.
That just moves the sequence up like it would have been anyhow.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I'm glad it's not a Friday. Okay, next on the agenda is approval of minutes, November 5. Does anybody have any additions or corrections? November 5, 2024.
I do, Mr. Chairman. Having been absent, I read, I needed to read, read it all kind of.
Closely.
Closely. But even with not being there on, there was what I point out, maybe a couple errors on page 36. 36, yeah.
Okay.
Line 2, 36, and line 7. I believe that's a error there indicating Ms. Freeman is making the motion twice, says Ms. Freeman, "So moved." I assume that could be an error. 36, line 2.
Yeah, I see it.
Yeah.
Go back to 35. Do you recall, Heather?
I think I actually did say that. I was trying to move it along, so the person actually making the motion would not repeat what Mr. O'Leary was stating. So if you continue to read on, then Mr. Wirtow does actually make the motion.
Yeah, there was, how the motion was getting made is what that, where that got convoluted.
Okay.
And, and then Mr. O'Leary kind of gave us the verbiage, if you will, if I'm not mistaken. And I think Heather, I don't know if she was intentionally saying "so moved" or not, but I think that she, it came out.
Okay, okay.
I don't think it was that she made a motion and she moved it herself.
Very good. That's all I want to point out. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other comments or corrections?
None, Mr. Chairman.
No, sir.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have to state I wasn't here.
Abstain.
So we have three ayes and two abstains. Motion is carried. Next is December 3. Mr. Eifelies is not here again.
True.
Any comments or corrections on December 3 meeting minutes?
None.
Hearing none?
None, Mr. Chairman.
I'll take a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the December 2024 minutes as written.
Do I have a second?
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
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 Again, we have three yeses, the three ayes and two abstains. Minutes are approved as written. Correspondence for the board. Mr. Shaylin?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I received a letter from the Concord Fire Department in December asking if Douglas, who is an inspector for the department, if they could get together with our homeowners association to discuss electrical hookups for RV vehicles, electrical vehicles. And I told him, unfortunately, our homeowners association has been defunct for many years. But I offered the, that I'd be happy to circulate any information he has to, in our neighborhood and the neighborhood behind me. So he sent me over several sheets of paper that he duplicated for me to circulate throughout the residence about how to have an electrical hookup for charging, how it should be installed in the homes by an authorized electrician, and other safety issues that the homeowners should be aware of. So I made copies of that to do that, and I will be circulating it throughout our neighborhood and the neighborhood behind me.
Okay.
So, and he thanked me for making the effort to do that. If anyone would like to see the letter and the brochures, I'd be happy to. You want to make a copy here at the township, because maybe people might be hearing this tonight and have an interest for that. So I brought a copy that could be, you know, made again. I'm sure he would probably be happy to know that that's being done in the township.
Good.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Schindler, I do have a copy of that letter.
Oh, you do?
From Doug, yes. So I'd be happy to send that to the board if you guys wanted to see that.
Okay.
I've had no correspondence.
None? Rich?
Which one?
Rich 1?
I had nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Rich 2?
I had nothing, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, and I have had none myself. Zoning Inspector Report. Heather, would you please?
Sure, I'd be happy to. First, I just wanted to welcome John Wirtow for recently being appointed as a regular member to the zoning commission. The trustees appointed him in January of this year after the resignation of Andy Langenfelter. I also just want to thank Andy for his 27 years of service on the zoning commission. It's a really long time to be on this kind of board, and I'm glad I've worked with him over the last 10 years. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to share with you some year-end statistics for 2024 regarding zoning board activities, permits, and some other zoning inspector activities. Activity for 2024 was as follows. The Board of Zoning Appeals took action on 29 different applications, one appeal application, six conditional use permits, and 22 variances. The zoning commission took action on five site plan review applications. The five projects included approvals for the following: the Longwood Plaza, Taco Bell, Crossroads Health, Auburn Vocational School District's Board of Education Offices, and the Auburn Career Center's Public Safety Training Building, the amended plan. Additionally, in 2024, based on permit activity, 20 new businesses opened their doors in Concord Township, making Concord their home. These type of businesses ranged from light manufacturing to personal services, including hair and nail salons, retail restaurants, car wash detailing, and other medical and professional office spaces. The vast majority of these new businesses did locate within existing buildings. As far as zoning permit activity, in 2024, this year resulted in a fewer, fewer permits than we had last year. We finished up the year with 378 zoning permits, which was just four less than what we had in 2023. And the average number of zoning permits processed annually since 2012 is approximately 363 permits a year. So we're a little bit above average. Total number of new dwelling units was slightly down from 2023, where we had 45 new dwelling units approved this year, which was actually 43 less than we had last year.
43 less?
Yes, yeah. So quite a, quite a bit dropped there. And I think that, that a lot of that is based on subdivision activity lots. So we do have the Villas at Canterwood that still has several lots available for development in the Ivy Ridge. So I would expect that this year those numbers would be higher than what we had in 2024. Maybe. And then finally, the zoning inspector was busy in the field as well and performed 1,144 property inspections for open zoning permits and followed up on 163 complaints about potential zoning violations. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions on, for Heather?
And thank you for the kind words. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And as for two people in the office?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
Well done.
You didn't have much spare time, did you?
No.
Okay. Public participation, other than what's on the agenda? Please state your name and your address.
Morgan McIntosh, 9880 Judge's Court. I do want to address the board regarding an agenda item that is deeper in the agenda, but I want to go back to a letter that I wrote the commission back in early November. Just to recap it, I won't read it verbatim. I'm not sure if it was read. I wasn't able to be here because I was working with the Board of Elections, and I wanted to express a concern regarding some action that had been taken by the board with respect to the I-9 development and calling up the agreement that this board had made some 18, approximately 18 months prior to that. I was part of this zoning commission several years ago when the sidewalk requirement was put in, and I certainly appreciate and understand the spirit of the work that was gone into it at that time. Working in economic development in Concord Township, being a part of the JED Board, I, I get all of it. I think it's an important component, but I thought the timing of it, as somebody who sits in front of businesspeople that come into the community and we talk about different things that we can do to attract businesses, I felt calling that up so quickly when we'd given a five-year window was, was just a little bit quick and know that we could be a little more business-friendly about that. So that's really what I wanted to discuss, was just really timing, because when we, we gave them that window, I felt honoring it and calling it up as quickly. And I think at the point, it was, the opening was imminent, but they weren't even opened yet. So I, I just felt like the timing was bad. However, subsequently, as there's been conversation around, a couple of other things have come to my attention, which I wanted to, just information I wanted to put in front of you. I understand, and I'm not, I haven't spoken with the developer specifically, but I've heard that there are some challenges with respect to the property and putting inside, meeting those requirements, one of which is the fire hydrants. But in subsequent conversations with Ms. Freeman and the zoning office and a few other things, it's come to my attention that the township and the zoning commission acted to put the requirement for the sidewalk in after the road design was approved, and that those two actions weren't, weren't coordinated together. So there, in addition to the placement of the fire hydrants, there's been some drainage things with the way that road was constructed that further present an issue. And something that I'll, I also see as a shortcoming is that while we talked about sidewalks and adjacent properties and connectivity through that district, which is since north and then west across Capitol Parkway, we never did any assessment of adjoining districts in the other directions. And the townships recently moved forward with one of the developers in the corner of Hunting Lake and Cryo Road, and at, at a time, the BZA didn't talk to them about their site plan, about putting any sidewalks there. So that ship has sailed. So there won't be any sidewalks in that corner coming out to Hunting Lake, which, in my thought process, would have been a logical purpose, because you have residential very close. So I'm asking that as you take this up with the developer, that you consider these factors, that not only the timing, but I'm wondering if maybe there's some additional diligence or some other considerations that need to be taken in, because there's some things that have come to light to me that, I think there's some questions that need to be answered. I think there's some dialogue that should be had, and, and we should, I don't think go forward and enforce a regulation that maybe doesn't make sense. I'm not saying it does or it doesn't, but I think there's some additional factors that need to be looked at, and it should, it should be considered in a, in a greater scope. I don't mean rewind it, but there's been a couple of things here that, that make me, I have a lot of questions. And like I said, I don't want to say I'm leaning one way or the other. I understand there's an agreement in place and that the board put together the agreement in good faith with the developer. The developer's interested in cooperating, so I'm in no way suggesting that we completely forego the agreement. I think some conversations to look at the challenges and the applicability, and then just visit the issue again as thoroughly as you can, as opposed to just, I'm not an advocate of government moving quickly and just, well, that's the rules and that's the way we're going to go. I think we need to do our diligence, do our work, and be as thorough as we can in this process. And I just wanted to call attention to those two things.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You'll remember it well, as will Frank, that the rest of the board wasn't here at the time when, a number of years ago, we were talking about a town center.
Yes.
Over on Auburn Road. There was a lot of controversy in the township, as you recall, and a lot of negativity. So the concept was there, but it was never, it never went anywhere, as you know. And I haven't heard one word mentioned about a town center since then, and with retail going the direction it's going, that would affect what we would have done. Would it be possible for the trustees to give us as a board an update on what's going on with all that? Because a lot of the decisions we make are related to a potential town center that, in my mind, may never come about.
I think what's, a quick answer, yes. I think that's, you know, workshops and, and you're always welcome to speak with any of the trustees when you have questions along. I know that we had a meeting about a year ago, and I don't want to totally speak out of term, but a comp plan or the comprehensive plan update, those are documents that live in time, and they are still a comprehensive plan as of, that, that this is what we're working with. And I can tell you, as a member of the board, the JED Board, as we entertain businesses and as a trustee, that we still speak with people in the spirit of that plan and document. So I think you can still hold faith in it, you know, that's, we operate as if it's, that's the plan, right? There's a period of time, and, and I think that there'll be some examination of that, as it's been a period of time. And so there'll, there'll be some, some reevaluation of that going forward, but it is still the document, and you're welcome to ask, you know, legal or whatever, for what the proper consideration of that is. But it's not terminated, in my mind, in any way. It's, it's the plan that we all had to work with.
I just wonder if it changed in, in a way that it would affect some of the decisions we make.
I had some conversation with Ms. Freeman, Administrator Rose, and with Ms. McMahon on the JED Board. And again, it's one of those things that as time goes on, there are, there are certain factors that change. And we're in conversations now about addressing some of that, and they'll be just, I don't want to say too much before it's appropriate, but stay tuned. So I think that, that document will be examined for some updates and some relooking in the coming year. But we have to be fluid. We talk to people all the time, and there are circumstances that change. I would suggest to you, one of the most glaring, significant changes to that comp plan is the fact that in 2015, when the 06 comprehensive plan was updated, Quell Hollow was a viable hotel. So we've had a lot of conversation about people that have had interest in that, but that's a new piece of the puzzle. So, you know, immediately you have to ask the question, what changes about development in Concord with that? And I don't think there's, there's no clear answer to that. So when businesses come and speak with us, we have to talk to them about current situations, but you still contrast it against the plan. And, you know, as those dates get further and further apart, that becomes more of a challenge and becomes more difficult. So that's why we're having conversations about maybe it's time for an update.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time this evening, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan. Do we have anybody on the phone?
No.
Nothing we know. Any other public participation? Okay, let's move on to new business. First one there is establish a rule pursuant to section 121.22F on the Ohio Revised Code. Brighty, would you do us a favor and give us a short?
Sure.
Short and sweet?
Sure.
Okay.
So as you know, the zoning commission is a public body, and under Ohio's open meeting laws, every public body must establish by rule a reasonable method whereby any person can ascertain and determine the time and place of all regularly scheduled meetings and the time, place, and purpose of all special meetings. And that's usually done in the beginning of the year, but it also can, you know, once it's done, then it's done until the rule changes. It can, it's not something you have to do annually, but you do have to set the rule. While on the, you know, township website, it definitely says that the zoning commission meets the, you know, first Tuesday of every month at 7:00 PM. We need to establish that by rule. We also, in addition, there has to be a rule that provides that any person may obtain advance notification of any meeting. And there's kind of like a way to do that, but we have to kind of establish this. It's just a technical statutory requirement, and we need to just comply with it. So I do have, you know, kind of the language of the rule that you can, you would have to read into the record.
Yes.
To establish and vote on.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, with that, I would move to establish the following rule.
Mr. Chairman, before you, may I ask a question?
Right ahead.
Before we move forward. Bright, as the rule, where does it actually reside? Does it go into our resolution? Or is it a code?
It does not go into the zoning.
It doesn't? Where does it reside?
It's just a resolution of the zoning commission. It gets posted on the website.
Oh, okay.
And that is really it.
That's it?
Okay.
Thank you.
This is not a zoning amendment?
It's not, okay.
It is not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thanks.
Moving on, I move to establish the following rule pursuant to section 121.22F of the Ohio Revised Code as, as follows. Unless otherwise postponed or canceled, regular meetings of the zoning commission shall be held on the first Tuesday at 7:00 PM of every month in the calendar year at the Concord Township Hall Building located at 7229 Ravenna Road, Concord Township, Ohio 44077. Notice of the zoning commission's regular meeting schedule shall be made by posting notice of scheduled meetings with specific dates and times on the Concord Township website, which is wwwconcordtwp.com. Unless otherwise specified in the notice, special meetings shall be held at the same location as regular meetings. The notice of a special meeting shall specify the date, time, location, and purpose or purposes of the meeting and will be posted on the Concord Township website, wwwconcordtwp.com within 24 hours of any special meeting. Anyone, including the news media, who has requested advance notice of all meetings, shall be notified by the secretary of the zoning commission and/or her designee of the date, time, location, and purpose or purposes of any such special meeting at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting. To request such advance notice, anyone, including the news media, shall provide to secretary to the zoning commission and/or her designee in writing at hfreeman@concort township.com with the mailing address, telephone number, and email address for purposes of getting such advance notice, notification, and the preference, if advance notice, shall be by mail or email. In addition to the rule for meeting notices, all notices of public hearings of the zoning commission shall be given in accordance with the Concord Township zoning resolution.
Why did you take out BZA?
Because we're not the BZA. We're the zoning commission.
Oh, they'll do their own?
That's correct.
Identical?
They will.
Okay.
Two points, and I don't know if it's critical or not. I'm not judging you, Hiram. When Hiram was listing the website, it's www.cconcordtwp.com. You missed that one dot. I just want to be sure. I don't know if it's important. And also, hfreeman@concordtwp.com as well. You said Concord Township. And I just want to make sure that we have it in their property. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I made the move?
I second it.
Can we have a little?
You're doing a motion, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh.
I moved.
You did make a motion.
I moved. I make a motion. I moved.
Okay. All right. You're good, John. Then I'll second that movement and motion.
And motion. Roll call, please.
We'll do a roll call. Okay. Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Eifelies?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Wirtow?
Yes.
And Mr. Rappert?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Next on the agenda is site plan and design review application number 61 by Mike Lopowski with Prospectus Architecture is requesting site plan and design review approval for project located at 7580 Auburn Road, being current partial number 08-A-019-0-00-045-0. Mike, if you would please state your name and address.
Sure. Mike Lopowski, Prospectus Architecture, 1300 East 9th Street, Suite 910, Cleveland, Ohio 44114.
The floor is yours.
I am here representing University Hospitals for a small building addition to their existing physician's pavilion. The project, or the addition, is part of a larger project that was just announced today. I don't know if you were able to forward that news press release to the committee here. University Hospitals is moving a Seidman Cancer Center to the TriPoint campus. A fairly large project, 40,000 square feet. The majority of it will be interior renovation to the ground and first levels of that building. The program is all outpatient, so the, that building is a business occupancy building. It will remain business occupancy. There will be no inpatients brought in from the hospital to the facility. The building addition that we're here to talk about is a, a small addition to house some radiology equipment that will serve the radiation oncology department. And I, the project was previously confidential, so I apologize for the vagueness of our submission and calling it Phase 2 addition, but Phase 1 is a relocation of some existing tenants that have to move to upper floors of the building to allow for the, this. that have to move to upper floors of the building to allow for this renovation to happen. But I do have floor plans of the proposed cancer center if you would like to see those, or if you'd rather just talk about the addition, I can talk about that as well.
Right now, I'd say let's just discuss what's on the agenda for you.
Okay. The addition is a small 2,500 square foot, single-story addition. It's going on the west side of the existing physician's pavilion. It faces the loading dock area of the hospital. We were able to find, they still make the brick for the addition that we did back in, or the building we did back in 2018, I think. So we're going to be able to match the color, style, mortar.
Is that going to be full white brick, Mike, or is that?
It's four, it'll be four-inch brick here. That building was, if you recall, a thicker structural block, but this will just be, they make a face brick component.
So it's a face brick. It's a stick?
Face brick, yes.
It won't be full white. That'll just be the lick and stick, I call it, right? To a degree.
So this building addition will actually house two linear accelerator pieces of equipment.
Yep, I know what they are.
We will have three-foot-thick concrete walls with.
Understood. I know what they are.
I did provide a photo of the existing exterior elevation and a copy of the brick. We included some minor site plans that we had at the time. We do have civil engineers on the team. We are working on, still working on the construction documents for the entire project and plan to submit those for building permit plan review at the end of March, but wanted to get ahead of this building addition through your process, ahead of time. And I heard there was a tragedy with the mailing and that some of the drawings may have been lost or run over by a truck, so I hope all of the submission is there. I do have a copy of all full-size drawings if there's any, anything you want me to present in more detail.
Access to this new radiology area is from where?
So the existing main entry of the building will remain. The elevators will remain. It will be accessed from inside the building. There's no exterior doors on this small addition.
If I'm not mistaken, the only thing I saw on staff is the dumpster location, right? That hadn't been finalized yet or hadn't been finalized? Am I wrong on that?
The location was finalized. There was, I had.
The height, I'm sorry, the height.
Questions regarding the details.
Yeah, the details. It was well put together than that. I just, the only thing I saw.
I was going to ask about the lack of windows, but you answered that question.
Yeah.
I thought maybe.
Three-foot-thick concrete walls don't lend themselves well to windows.
I thought it was MRI possibly.
Good guess, good guess.
Linear accelerators don't lend themselves to.
Yes, yes.
That as well.
The building is getting additional upgrades as well. There's some emergency generator, a new emergency generator, some utilities, new hot water tanks, basically beefing up the infrastructure to allow for this new program.
Generator exhaust goes where?
Up.
All the way up?
It's, it'll be ground grade mounted. It'll be adjacent to the addition. So it will, I think it's on a bit of a platform next to it, and it's all exterior.
The exhaust just goes above the pavilion or does it stand?
No, it's, it will be roughly around the first floor elevation. So grade drops off a little bit from that lower, from that ground level.
Windows can't open on a pavilion?
No, there's no operable windows in this building.
Any air conditioning?
They're up on the top of the third floor roof. So 50 feet up above that.
What power set generator, Mike?
Diesel, diesel.
Natural gas.
Can't use natural gas on a diesel, like safety.
It is diesel, you said, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it can't use natural gas.
It is diesel?
Yeah.
My home uses natural gas.
Yeah, right.
I would assume everything, you've seen the recommendations from the various departments. I would assume you will meet all those requirements?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Comments?
I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Peterson?
No, I'm good.
John?
No, sir.
Other than Mike's terms about meeting all the comments from the department, I'm fine with it. You're good? I'm good, too.
Motion is in order, Mr. Chairman. Unless we need to read the eight conditions.
Ready.
Mike is. See, I would recommend conditional approval based upon the staff's comments, the eight listed items, and recommend conditional approval as noted.
The staff recommendations?
The staff recommendations.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
So just to be clear, you're making a motion that he's accepting the staff recommendations and that's going to be on the plan.
Meaning, it's definition of conditional approval.
Yeah, I understand it.
Have you, do you want those written in, read in?
I think for the record, it would be best maybe to get those into the record and then he can confirm that he can comply with those.
Okay, go back to my motion.
Okay. Go back to your motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the conditional approval of the site plan and the design root review application for.
Number 61.
Number 61, thank you, Rich. Based on the following conditions. Number one, revise the proposed dumpster enclosure plan to provide an eight-foot-tall vinyl fence. The gate shall also be made of the same vinyl and specify the color as to be proposed. Number two, provide light fixture details proposed for the exterior of the building. Said fixtures shall be downward facing. Number three, the proposed emergency generator should be screened with an eight-foot fence instead of the six-foot as proposed. Number four, provide a floor plan for the addition and any related interior alterations. Five, include an abbreviated stormwater pollution prevention plan for the demo and construction. Number six, include proposed finished grades for all corners of the building addition, even if they are the same as the existing grades. Seven, on the north side of the building between the generator enclosure and the building, please include language or show how there will be positive fallaway from the building foundation, as well as how it will drain out as the stone area proposed finished grade for the west corners are about the same. Eight, plans are subject to detailed review and revision by Lake County Stormwater Management Department.
And it's agreed that you will meet all those conditions?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Mr. Peterson? Mr. Peterson?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Eiffelies?
Yes.
Mr. Wirtow?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Ruppert?
Yes.
Conditionally approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nice job.
Moving on to old business. Work section review proposed zoning text amendments as outlined in the memo dated July 30th, 2024, and modifications on two district uses. That is tabled, and I would like to continue the table. Number two, establish a designated final date for completion of the sidewalk in accordance with the agreement between Concord Township Zoning Commission and the IN, or is it IN9? Or IN9? IN9.
Mr. Chair, can you just give me one minute while we switch, while I leave this part of the discussion?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
IN9 LLC Group LLC are probably located on Old Cryle and Cryle Road, being parcel number 08-8-020-0-00-048-0. This was tabled until the February 4th, 2025 meeting. And we now have, thank you, Bryde, very much.
Thank you.
We now have Mr. James Libber coming on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we heard what Morgan had to say. We now have latest and greatest is a memo to the zoning commission from Mr. Nicky, and he is the IN9 Group leader or VP or whatever he may be. And it says, Dear zoning commission, this is dated February 4th, 2025. It says, I am respectfully requesting the IN9 Group LLC, further known as IN9, be provided another month to appear before the zoning commission and to provide additional information and discussion relative to the agreement between IN9 and Concord Township regarding the construction of a sidewalk on the Cryle Road. In furtherance of doing so, I am hereby requesting that the zoning commission please table the matter for consideration at its next meeting. The reason for this request is not for the purpose of delay. Given the weather and the snow cover which has existed on the parcel, I have had difficulties getting the proper parties to assist in the examination and inspection of the issues with the sidewalk. Additionally, the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays also caused delays with contractors and consultants who have been unable to vote their time and attention to this matter in a timely fashion. Again, this request is not for the purpose of delay, but so that I can obtain all the necessary and appropriate information for the zoning commission so that it can be appropriately evaluate and consider any further course of action with respect to the agreement between IN9 and Concord Township. Additionally, as you are likely aware, we just opened both Little Mountain Creamery and Johnny's Auto Spa in detail in late October, just prior to the commission's meeting wherein this matter was brought back for consideration, in parentheses. And the press of business and time devoted to the two openings of brand-new businesses and the attendant challenges to get them up and running and to try and ensure their success and stability, along with my day-to-day business and the untimely death of my brother-in-law, parentheses, whose daughter is the manager of the Little Mountain Creamery, end of parentheses, on January 3rd, 2025, has severely derailed my efforts with respect to this matter. For that, I apologize, but I sincerely hope that this commission finds this request to be appropriate and warranted. Finally, I truly regret not being able to attend your meeting this evening, but I discovered at approximately 1:35 PM today that I would not be able to be there in person, and I was unable to find a proper representative to attend in my stead. For that, I apologize to all of you. Thank you for your time and consideration of my request. I very much appreciate any reprieve we may consider in light of the foregoing. Yours very truly, IN9 Group LLC, John Nicky.
Comments?
Sure, let's go.
Okay. Based on what we've heard tonight, I just wonder, what's the possibility of just reverting back to the agreement that we already have in place? It was a five-year agreement to give him time to get the business established, because there's only three more years remaining on that, or a little more than three more years. And if there's not going to be any sidewalk at Honey Lake, Honey Lake at the Todd Victor Project, and the waterline situation on the road there has to be resolved, what's, what's the purpose of pushing forward on this to, again, what I call the sidewalk going nowhere? It's, nobody walks down there. And if there's not going to be a sidewalk where we thought there was, why can't we just drop and go back to our original agreement? Three remaining years, that gives us three years to solve all the related issues, and it won't hurt a thing. And it gives him a chance to get the business established. That's my opinion.
I agree with what Rich has said. Wholeheartedly.
Rich?
I prepared some notes here, Mr. Chairman, if you may. I have three, three issues to bring, bring forth here regarding this. The first was after reading the minutes of the December meeting, I was troubled by the reference to the fact that we gave variances. It's, it's mentioned in here, and I'm sure it was just a slip of the tongue using a term that wasn't appropriate. As we all know, it was a conditional approval, just like we just gave the gentleman here for that project. The condition was construct the sidewalk. We have authority to grant variance, so I'm just kind of point out that, but at the same, it later in the minutes reflected, Ms. Freeman did correct that, if you recall. She did say, hey, there's no variance. It was a condition of approval. So, so that kind of set me the wrong way as I was reading through this, because when this was initially here, I didn't approve in that condition, but the board did, which was okay. I didn't think we could agree.
You didn't approve of?
We voted, I didn't approve. I did stick by what is required at the time so they would build the sidewalk along with the project. That was why I voted against it at the time, because it was part of, part of our plan. However, having said that, and in reading the minutes in the discussion, I, I took the time to go back to both comprehensive plans, and I read it thoroughly and detailed. In multiple locations in the, in the comprehensive plan, and particularly in the update, it refers to the town center core and uses the word core. And in the, in the, in the plan, when it endorses walkability, pedestrian access, it refers to the core center. And relative to the, to the capital district, as also Ms. Freeman pointed out in the minutes, the zoning resolution states the board may require a walk, doesn't require, it says may. And I did know that at the time when we first looked at this, when it was first brought to our attention, it was like, it's a requirement in the capital district. Well, it says that it may. So I was really troubled or confused by that. The core, what I believe the town center core is west of 44. That's what I believe from reading the plan. The comprehensive plan describes it that way. And it talks about walkability and pedestrian access as west of 44. So, so it, again, so I, it troubled me. So I, so, and then I bring forth then my third point, was that given the development of Cryle Road, both north and south of Capital Parkway, and with consideration of what I interpret the comprehensive plan is to the walkability of the town center core, and given the fact that developers requested more time, this might be the opportunity for the township to, to study or reevaluate the walk, walkability connectivity on Cryle Road. Perhaps it might, perhaps it might come in the form of a public use path to connect to the Greenway Corridor at Girdle, Cryle to Girdle, or Capital Parkway to Girdle, to the south, certainly not to the north. So, so it might give an opportunity, giving them more time, but also incumbent upon the township to maybe do a study, kind of look at this. Is it still viable to consider pedestrian walkways on Cryle Road? It's certainly the way it's developed, certainly the way it's gone. And, and in consideration of how close the Greenway Corridor, I bike it a lot. So it comes down, goes down, connects to Ravenna, and then we, we kind of bike through Quail Hollow to get down to Girdle, you know, because there's nothing to Girdle unless you came down. So anyway, not to bore you with that. We hit on that. We hit on that. So I... That's where I was left with the issues, and I just wanted to bring that up for discussion. Knowing how the comprehensive plan was written, and not having been around when the comprehensive plan was written, but the way I read it, that's how I interpret the meaning, the intent of where walkability pedestrian was intended to be. But Capitol District was drawn across 44 to the east side. And so I guess from there it was then interpreted to include the same type of pedestrian walkability within all of Capitol District, where I think the comprehensive plan was intending to make it the Town Center Core. So that's where I was at with that. And wanted to bring that up for discussion. So it might be an opportunity here for the township to take a step back and reconsider what the plan is for Cryle between Capitol and Girdle, or around the Capitol Parkway-Cryle Road area.
But don't you think that part of the Town Center on the west side, which is still out there in limo, is now more on the east side of 44?
If you ask me from a planning perspective, and I'm not a planner, but no, I don't think so. I don't think the roundabout was designed to create...
Well, one is a little bit, a lot different from this Town Center versus what's been developed on the east side, on the east side. So on the east side, do we have sidewalks?
No, we don't.
We don't.
We don't. We have plazas, but no sidewalks.
There's no connectivity.
Don't we have sidewalks up by Verizon and those?
No.
You can't walk from the Holiday Inn to the restaurants.
Right.
The reason I bring up then, Cryle can be viewed as more as a marginal... Auburn Road is a little bit further away from 44. Cryle can be viewed more as a marginal, and we have later, I guess, called the strip plazas and stores and retail and whatnot. It is not conducive to pedestrian or walkways. And I can see that, and so perhaps as we go south to Capitol, we need maybe reconsider why that should be or not be endorsing or supporting pedestrian access or walkability.
If we go from north into Creamery up towards Capitol, and that gets developed, would we have sidewalks there?
I'm not saying, "Would we?" I'm saying it should be studied, reevaluated, because there isn't that much there.
Right now.
Even with another development, there's just...
There's nothing.
But again, now we're going past what now I'm giving you planning costs, and I don't want to do that. I don't want to do that. But if I... If you ask me if I wrote a comprehensive plan today, it certainly wouldn't reflect sidewalks on Cryle Road. It just, in my opinion.
That's what I felt if we went back to the original.
I think your thoughts are great, and I think you're spot on and very well thought out, and I would agree with you on that as well.
If we're pointing... Back to the original agreement, we've got three-plus years to see what happens.
Right.
And then we might decide you have to build it, or you don't have to build it at all.
I think the perception of a Town Center right now on the east side of 44 Hyrum is probably because it's developed. And if the Town Center, when the Town Center gets developed, that's going to be the Town Center. I think it's perception right now.
Yes, the concept of the Town Center as in plan is mixed use. Not stores and retail that's on the east side. It's mixed use. So, and there's, again, a highlight, you'll see it in there. It's multiple locations surrounding, indicating the Town Center is the core. It may, the township may require sidewalks. Doesn't even say it shall be in the Town Center Core, but it's... To me, it makes more sense being there. And I think that was, again, the conceptual plan. So in consideration of that, I did, and I don't want to make this further discussion, I did prepare some verbiage for a couple motions as well. As soon as we have a complete discussion, just so you're aware, Mr. Chairman.
I think it all makes sense. I think the biggest thing to me would be, depending on the direction that the township is taking and the way the development's going, my biggest concern would be sidewalks would be necessary for the safety of the pedestrians. If by looking at the way it's being developed, they wouldn't be walking around those areas anyway, why force them to be put in? Right? So right now, basically, we have to see how the direction of the township continues to grow and to make our decisions up as it's growing in the direction that we have to be considered for the safety, welfare of the pedestrians in the public. With all our zoning, if you look at zoning, basically, if you look in our laws, it says we take all that into consideration. So let that direct.
To that point, bike lanes would make more sense than sidewalks.
Probably so.
Yeah.
Probably so.
Cryles County?
Cryle is a county that was offered.
So based on that being said, what should we do tonight in regards to...
Kind of like to hear Rich's motion. I mean, you've worked so hard at it now, Rich, you got my attention.
As I go one...
Well, in consideration, and the verbiage, just let me draft. Okay.
Sure.
Play with it, counsel my considerate way I worded it. The first was to request the Concord Township trustees initiate, on behalf of our board, making a motion to request the trustees initiate a study to examine the feasibility and alignment considerations to promote walkability and pedestrian access along Cryle Road from Capitol Parkway to Girdle Road. And that was just scratched today, okay? Just thought of that. The second part then, in consideration of what that request, a motion that the zoning commission review the status of the requirement for sidewalks on Girdle Road referenced in our agreement with the IN-9 Group, IN-9 Group, in July 2026.
On Cryle Road. You said Girdle.
Did I say Girdle?
Yes, you did.
On Cryle. Reference in our agreement with IN-9 Group in July 26. I just draw 18 months. Like, let's check back in 18 months to see...
What's going on?
What's going on. If... Because I don't know that trustees would... Would study it, examine if we made that motion, if we agree. And it's kind of like what we already heard, okay? Even though I wrote this earlier today.
Does that give us enough time?
I checked back.
The five years?
Well, we're good till 27 with the original agreement.
We're good till April of 28.
Twenty-eight.
Five years. April 23 is the...
Is that when we did that? Okay. Why don't we just go to that date?
That's the end, but it says there it's null and void at April 28. The agreement is null and void.
Okay.
I did read that.
We could do a internal review.
So I throw out 18 months as a way to just say...
And that took it to July of 26 or July of 27? July of 27 it would take it to?
Eighteen months, it's 26.
Twenty-six.
July 26.
Yeah, July 26.
If I might, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, please, that's just idea from the chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm sorry.
If I might, I love both of those recommendations. I would just flip them, because what's really for consideration before the commission tonight is the establishing a final date of the sidewalks pursuant to the conditional that was passed in 23.
Yes.
And so I think you need to address that first, whether you decide to kick it and table it until July of 26 or the end of 26. It's entirely up to the board. Then as a result of that, then I would make the motion to request that the Board of Trustees reevaluate the whole idea of the walkability and what you put in that other motion. If I might, reverse.
That should go through, yeah.
Two separate.
That's important.
And what was your third?
That was it.
I had three, I had three points to bring up, which I did.
Okay.
And then two motions.
Two motions.
Yes.
All right.
Well thought out, Rich.
Thank you.
Yep.
But take a look at the 15 update, believe me, it's, again, in my interpretation, I believe Heather's as well, that the way the plan conceived the Town Center and the Core, that's how I, my takeaway is my understanding of it.
Any other discussion?
If the motion, if I made a motion that we just revert back to the agreement we already have, that's in effect, is that a valid motion? Would that be a valid motion, just to enforce the agreement that we've already signed?
Well, I think that... It's a valid motion. My only concern I have is what was raised in the prior issue, which is if you don't establish a point in time where there is discussion about where are we and what are we looking at far enough ahead of time? If you wait until you get to 28, then you've put yourself at a point where you're going to either have to force them to do it, or...
Drop it.
You're going to have to drop it. And so by doing a review point, whether it's 18 months, or 24 months, or whatever, it would make sense under the circumstances. And I think part of that is, how much time do the trustees need to go back and clarify this issue, whether it's directly related to the Town Center concept or to the Cryle Road and the Capitol Parkway development?
Well, I was thinking about that. I was thinking about that, though, maybe put the thumb down and give them three months. But no, no, I know how government moves. I just split it, I just split the remaining three years, eighteen months. If indeed something needed allows 26, 27 to get something done.
It doesn't mean that you have to take action at that meeting.
Right, right.
You can table that further for another six months, eighteen months, whatever.
I just reread my, would motion that the zoning commission review the status of the requirement for sidewalks as referenced in our agreement with IN-9 Group LLC in July of 2026.
Make that motion.
You just...
I just reread it, I just reread it.
That's it?
Yeah.
I second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? I'm fine. Mr. Lively, are you okay with that one?
I am.
Okay. Let's have roll call.
Okay, Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Ruppert?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Wirtel?
Yes.
Second motion.
Yeah?
I think we should.
Yeah, please.
Heather, will you let them know about a motion tonight?
Oh, yes, I can send correspondence to them regarding the motion that you guys made tonight.
And say, you know, we're more than willing to sit down and discuss it with them and everything like that?
If you'd like, I can draft something up and have you look at it before I send it.
Okay. Okay. Rich Eiffelise, number two.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I would also motion to, on behalf of the Concord Township Zoning Commission, to request the Concord Township trustees initiate a study to examine the feasibility and alignment considerations to promote walkability and pedestrian access along Cryle Road from Capitol Parkway to Girdle Road.
I second that one.
Discussion? Any comments? Let's have a roll call. Do I ever second? I'm sorry.
I second.
You said it already.
I did, yes, sir.
Discussion? Okay, let's have a roll call.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Yes.
Mr. Wirtel?
Yes.
Mr. Ruppert?
Yes.
Mr. McIntyre?
Nope.
We have your work cut out for you. But it's a pleasant one, I think. Okay, next meeting. That ends our agenda. Our next meeting is March 4th, 2025. Do I have a motion to adjourn it?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're down.
We're down? One point?